All right. Couple of minutes past six. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, October ninth, 2025, regular scheduled city council meeting. May we have a roll call?
Councilor Johnson.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilwoman Westman.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
And would you all please join? Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have additions or deletions to the agenda?
I think there may have been a request from our absent mayor to continue item seven B, code of conduct, to the next meeting.
Okay, so we will continue item seven B to, for our next meeting. And any additional material?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff did distribute additional materials for tonight's meeting. We had one email related to item six C, two emails related to item seven A, one email seven B, and one email related to item seven C. All materials were available for the public prior to tonight's meeting and were distributed to the city council.
Thank you. We need a report on closed session?
No reportable action was taken.
Great, thank you. That'll take us to item four, oral communications by members of the public. Now is your time to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda or anything that is on consent, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello there. Good evening, Council.
Welcome.
And, or Vice Mayor, and I think with the Mayor Clark's in Vegas, I believe. So over the past few months, Capitola has felt divided with emotions high and misunderstandings on all side. At the last council meeting, Matt Orbach approached my wife and me as we're about to leave. It was a simple introduction and olive branch that led to something long overdue, a real conversation, and with the help of Chief Ryan, we set a date for last Tuesday. That weekend, as I reflected on the past six months and tried to better understand where Councilmember Orbach was coming from, I realized that some of the tools that I used to seek accountability had instead built walls. Before our meeting, I canceled my Public Requests Act's request and dropped my claim as a sign of good faith and a desire for healing. In just one evening, we accomplished more through honest conversation than months of emails, council meetings, and headlines could ever. We listened, we connected the dots, and we began to understand where fear and frustration really came from. Much of it tied to events I had nothing to do with, but that still shaped how things were perceived. I told Melinda, and I'll say it again publicly, I'm sorry for any stress or fear my actions may have caused, or their timing may have caused. I understand how you could have felt that way, and I forgive her for everything on all sides. Life is too short to be bitter and hold grudges. I'm a flawed human, I'm a sinner, and as Christ forgave us, we're called to extend the same grace to others. I remind my children every day that the world is full of kind people, and if you can't find one, be one. That conversation reminded me how powerful simple face-to-face dialogue can be. Politics, party labels, online noise only builds walls, but when we sit down together as neighbors, not opponents, those walls start to come down. You don't have to agree with someone to listen and respect them. I also want to express my deep appreciation for Chief Ryan for taking the time after hours to meet with us as a neutral third party. Your presence helped soften the tone and brought calm and respect to the table. The way you guided us and offered perspective truly set the stage for a meaningful and hopeful start towards rebuilding understanding. I know some people are still upset, but I ask everyone to take a breath. Let's choose empathy over outrage and understanding over division. Melinda's a human too, and serving on the city council, balancing work, community, boards, and families, not easy. We don't always see the full story behind decisions or emotions involved. Mistakes were made, mischaracterizations and misunderstandings happen, but we can all grow from this. We've each taken steps towards healing, and I believe that continuing in that spirit with humility, grace, and honesty, we will, we will bring true closure and understanding for everyone involved. Capitola deserves leadership from both its officials and citizens. That models patience, ability, and forgiveness. If we keep choosing dialogue and grace, I truly believe our community will come out stronger and wiser and more united than before. So, thank you, and I, you know, apologize for just everything and to everything else. You might, and thanks for meeting, and hope to continue to meet on other topics.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other public comment? That was great seeing none other, one other. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cheryl. I'm a citizen here, and I have been one of the members of the community who've been distressed by what's gone on since April seventeenth. And I stand here with my heart full for what I hear from Mr. McGuire and from the heartfelt place that we, as the city, have come to. And I thank you, Chief Ryan, for being the facilitator and for everybody stepping forth for the words that have been spoken. Over the last while, there's been a lot of division, so we want to unite, we want to de-escalate, and that's what I hear tonight. So, I just want to express my gratitude. So, thank you to everybody that rose to the highest that we can rise to, and to keep that as a marker, always. Keep talking, keep sharing, and keep taking care of each other.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Any other members of the public? I don't think I see any, so I'll turn this back over to council, and I believe I'll start on this side.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to start by thanking Mr. Kevin McGuire for his apology and respond by saying that I truly, am truly sorry for the stress and pain and harm that my comments have caused you and your family. After discussion, after the discussion at the last council meeting regarding the code of conduct complaint, I wasn't sure where we were headed in terms of a resolution. But after the meeting, my husband informed me that he had approached Kevin and Teresa outside City Hall to introduce himself, provide them with some of the context surrounding the incident in question and why we felt threatened, and listened to their side of what happened and the impacts my comments have had on him and his family. I want to thank Kevin and Teresa for being willing to have that open and honest conversation with Matt, and specifically thank Teresa for proposing that both couples sit down and have a conversation so that we have the opportunity to meet and talk about what happened. That conversation led to a meeting last week with the two couples and Chief Ryan in which we were able to sit down face-to-face, share our lived experiences, and gain a better understanding of where each other was coming from. I was able to share more specific information about the things that were going on in the weeks leading up to the April meeting, which included everything from members of the community feeling physically threatened outside of the RTC Park Ave meeting at New Brighton Middle School, to people contacting Councilmember Peterson's employer, trying to get him fired, to my own experience being subject, being the subject of targeted personal attacks and disinformation online. Kevin and Teresa shared examples of negative comments they had received online and in person and had, and how that had affected them emotionally and harmed his reputation in the community. By getting the conversation off of the internet and out of the council chambers, we were able to connect in a more human level and understand how and why each of our actions was perceived by the other, the way that they were. As a result, I do not believe Kevin's visit to my neighborhood that day was intended to be threatening. To all my supporters, I would like to request that you please refrain from making comments to that effect or continuing that narrative as it is counterproductive. In the next couple of years, we are going to have to face some incredibly difficult challenges related to housing, transportation, climate, climate change during a time of extreme polarization in the local, state, and national level. I think what happened here is a good reminder that the first step towards lasting solutions is to get to know our neighbors. And by that, I mean the people on our block, the people in the different parts of the city, and the people in the different parts of our county that we interact with on a daily basis. We are all coming at these problems from different angles, but we are all in this together, and at the end of the day, we all want the same things, to be safe, happy, and healthy. Thank you, Kevin and Teresa, again, for being willing to work through and resolve this conflict and for providing me with a better understanding of who you are, why and how much you love the city, and how you're looking to improve and protect it. I hope you were also able to learn similar things about me, and I look forward to working with you in the future to achieve our shared goals. Thank you again. Shout out to the chief for being amazing and offering your insight. I do actually have some updates, too. Can I do that, too, as well? Okay. So, I attended the Metro Board meeting on September twenty-sixth and received an update on the permanent hydrogen fueling station in Watsonville. Construction started this month, and it's scheduled to be completed in the spring of 2026. We also received a report from the Metro Facility Master Plan, which plans to include a Watsonville facility for Metro to reduce the dead, dead, deadhead miles. This alone will save half a million dollars annually in operation costs. More importantly, because the majority of Metro staff actually live in South County and Watsonville, having a facility there will significantly increase their quality of life because they'll, they'll be able to cut down their commute times between home and work. I want to thank everyone who participated in the week without driving. I hope it was a eye-opening experience for you. I was able to be at the kickoff event at the Capitola Mall and was able to share with the public many of our infrastructure projects that we're, we're working on to help make our city safer for our residents to walk, bike, and roll. Also, over the weekend, I was able to meet with Congressman Jimmy Panetta to discuss, to discuss some of these ongoing infrastructure, infrastructure projects, and specifically asked for his help to support us in the funding of our Cliff Drive Resiliency Project and our long-term safety plan at Bay Ave corridor for the two roundabouts. I have plans to follow up with his team to determine if additional state, federal funding is possible, and encourage his team to work with our, our staff to collaborate on a strategy. I look forward to seeing these projects come to fruition, and I really want to give a huge shout out to our amazing staff, especially Director Jessica Khan and her dedicated team in Public Works. Thank you for all that you do.
I want to thank, acknowledge the Maguires and also Councilman Orbach and her husband for having a great community conversation. So, it was great and glad to see that working on. Just one last thing was I attended the community meeting last night at New Brighton. I was very pleased with the turnout and also appreciate city staff for putting on a great event, and I thought it was great to let the community hear the things that are going on and the zoning changes that are coming and also what's going on on the Forty-first Avenue. And it was just great to see the community turnout, and that's it. Thank you.
I simply want to thank Councilmember Orbach and Kevin and Teresa for, and Matt, too, for getting together and working this out. I think it just goes to prove once again that it is important for people to sit down and talk to each other and be able to listen to each other. I don't think enough of that goes on in today's world, as we all tend to spend way too much time on screens and communicating that way. So, congratulations to both families for doing that. And I also attended the meeting last night at New Brighton, and I wanted to commend the planning staff. I thought you did an excellent job, and all the information was clear, and people had lots of opportunities to get, put their input into it, and I look forward to the results. Thank you.
Great, yes, I want to commend the Maguires and the Orbaks for handling a really tough situation and creating a great outcome, so I am proud to be in a community with folks like this, and that's what this is really all about. And just a little note, a couple of weekends ago, we had our beach festival. That was heavily attended. I got to judge the lighted boat parade, which was really fun. Mayor Clark was doing business on his stand-up paddle in the, in the creek, so he, he had a more important job than I did. And I know Councilmember Johnson did a lot of the volunteering. It just was a really good event, our first drone show, so excited. Thank you for the volunteers. It was a really great event and looking forward to the next one. All right, so we can move on to consent, item six. There are three.
A couple of staff comments.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We usually do those first. Yes, I totally out ordered it. Please, any staff comments are welcome.
I think Chief Ryan has some fun ones for us.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to acknowledge your pink. So, for those of you that don't know, going a little off-script, that the Capitol Police Department back in 2017 adopted pink patches as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we all rock these pink patches for the month of October. It was brought to us by a woman, Alexis Martinez, who lived, or who worked in the Capitol Village, who lost her battle to cancer in 2023, but we're just really proud to bring it out. It has a very much a personal meaning for most people. So, if you see us, it's a conversation starter. We're really proud to wear them, and that's just, it's really fun. So, the other thing is to remind you all that Monty Fireworks is this Sunday, so they'll kick off at eight PM. It'll be really busy, really crazy, for about twenty, thirty minutes. And, and then also, the police department was invited as an annual event that we do with New Brighton Middle School. We're actually attending tomorrow to do three assemblies with all three grade levels around e-bike safety and do sort of a dialogue. It'll look different for the sixth graders than it does for the eighth graders, but we will be doing that tomorrow, so that's all I have. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for the e-bike.
Before I leave, I thank you, both of you, the Orbaks and the Maguires, for inviting me to the table. I was honored to be there. It was truly a symbolism of what I devoted my professional and personal life to, so just to be present and to come out where we've come, I just, it was an honor to be there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, chief, on many levels, and yeah, I'll be interested in the e-bike update. I know, that's a big one. Director Khan, welcome.
Evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My updates are not nearly as fun or personal, but important. Our pavement management project for this year is complete, but we still have some other pavement work going around town that I want to make everyone aware of. Tomorrow morning, on Capitol Avenue between Forty-fourth and Forty-fifth, in front of the Completive Bluff Project, which is very exciting, they will also be completing some pavement restoration work on Capitola Road, so that should be done on Friday. We also have some selected work still to do that had involved concrete work on Charter Street, Pine Street, and then on Reposa Avenue, which is still to come in the month, next month. And then, of course, the restoration of the lanes on Bay Avenue, which is currently being done through our informal bidding process, so we anticipate having that done in the month of November. Thank you.
Great updates. Thank you. Is that it for staff? Okay, great. Now, we can go to item six, consent items. There are three on the agenda. I moved consent items six A to six C.
I'm sorry, I'm going to need to recuse myself from item B, so.
So, let's go ahead and do you mind moving A and C? I will move item six A and six C. Great, can we get a roll call for those of us not recused?
Councilmember Orbach?
Hi.
Councilwoman Westman?
Hi.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Hi.
All right, and that'll take us to.
Council, Councilmember Jensen, could you just state your conflict? The FPPC rules require you to just say why you're accusing.
Sure, I have a potential financial impact due to I live within approximately five hundred feet of the proposed project.
So, then, Councilmember Jensen, you'll need to be part of that motion we just did, because we just did A and C.
I'm sorry, you guys, you took a motion on items A and C, and you took a vote, so all we're missing is Councilwoman Jensen's vote. Okay, Councilwoman Jensen.
Hi.
Great.
Thank you, sorry. Now, I move item six B, and I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jensen? Oh, sorry, I recused. Councilmember Orbach?
Hi.
Councilwoman Westman?
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Morgan?
Hi, thank you so much. All right, so item seven this evening, general government. We will go to item seven A, which is a community grants award recommendation, and we have Ms. Woodman C.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Morgan and Council. It's nice to see you this evening. This will be fairly brief, so your community grants program, the recommendation this evening is simple. It is to approve the 2025 through 2027 community grants program funding as recommended by your appointed ad hoc subcommittee. So, it's a double recommendation. Some background, so in the current budget, this is a reminder, you did confirm on July twenty-fourth that early childhood and youth programming, ECYP restricted funds, that your preference was to use fifteen thousand dollars of that restricted fund to scholarships, and the remaining forty-nine thousand for ECYP qualifying grants, and a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the general fund for this community grant program. And then, just a reminder, this is not the only way that the city gives to organizations that provide very important services for our community. So, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, go to both Second Harvest Food Bank and Grey Bears. They provide very important services such as healthy food for families and senior services. So, getting into the details, just a reminder, council did confirm these parameters for the community grants program earlier this year. There is a two-year term. There are two types. They both start with O, so that's never confusing. Outcome and operational, the difference is the amount of funds. And the reporting, you did confirm that you, the wish is for one presentation per term, so once every two years at least, but for outcome recipients only, so those organizations receiving more than seventy-five hundred dollars. So, applications were accepted for the month of August. You appointed an ad hoc subcommittee to review applications and make a general funding recommendation. The ad hoc committee was comprised of council members Orbach and Westman. The committee met on September eighth, and we received a slightly amended recommendation on October eighth. So, that brings me to some details. I'm very pleased to say that we received twenty-seven applications overall, which is more than the last time, three years ago, from twenty-four specific organizations. So, that means certain organizations did apply for more than one grant. Twenty-two for general funding, five that qualified for early childhood youth programming. These were self, the organizations self-identified, so five organizations applied for ECUAP funding. There were eleven outcome grants, sixteen operational, and the majority of them were within the health and wellness priority. All, a summary list of all applications was included in the agenda packet, if there's interest, and there's a printout of that on your table. So, the recommendation, which again, this is not me, this is the subcommittee's recommendation, I'm just summarizing, because the total funding asked for by our applicants did exceed the general fund amount for this program, there were some reductions required. So, the ad hoc committee really tried to be as uniform as possible, though the first thing that was decided upon was we, our outcome grants maximum funding should be ten, not fifteen thousand. Operational grants were reduced to about seven thousand instead of seventy-five hundred, and I mentioned five organizations self-identified as ECYP qualified because the Boys and Girls Club did not. However, they do serve youth with one-on-one mentorship, so that was moved to the restricted funding where there was money that was still available. And additional reductions were made until the general fund asks were within budget. And again, I'm sure the subcommittee can provide details if necessary. I apologize if this is small. We are a popular program, so twenty-five or such applicants are listed here, and that, that's why I wanted to see them all on the screen. So, as I mentioned, there was a funding recommendation, recommendation, excuse me, made back in September. It was slightly amended yesterday based on new information. So, that is in front of council. It's here on the screen. I'll pause if there are questions, but ultimately, this, this outlined recommendation comes within the hundred and thirty-three thousand of general fund, and then the next page is ECYP, again, within the budget of the forty-nine thousand, still allowing for the scholarships. again, within the budget of the 49,000, still allowing for the scholarships at 15. I'll pause. Questions?
The adjustments were made by the subcommittee?
Yes. Thank you. And then, of course, our esteemed subcommittee, are there any comments you'd like to make?
One of, thank you. I think one of our goals was to fund as many of the groups as we could fund, you know, staying in the appropriate categories. And I think we gave it thoughtful deliberation, and I hope the rest of the council members will support our recommendation.
Ditto what Susan said. It was great working with you.
And I just have one comment I just want to make. Just in the interest of transparency, I'd like to state that I serve as unpaid member on the board of the Capitol Public Safety Foundation, in which it is a potential grant recipient. Since my position's unpaid, I do not have a disqualifying financial interest under a conflict of interest laws, and I will be participating in the voting of this item. I'm making this disclosure so that is reflected in the official record.
Perfect. I think I did have one question. I see some reallocation of funds for the two different United Way. Will we still receive a report from them just because it does total the?
Absolutely. That can certainly be something I'll communicate to that organization if that is the ultimate action.
Great. Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, we can take this to public comment.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. My name's Elizabeth Murphy, and I'm here on behalf of the O'Neill Sea Odyssey to thank you for your continued partnership and support. As a coastal community, Capitola is on the front lines of climate change. We've seen firsthand how rising seas and extreme weather events can affect our homes, our beaches, and our local economy. That's why education is one of our strongest tools for resilience. Through O'Neill Sea Odyssey, your investment will help to bring more than two decades of hands-on marine science education to Capitola's youth, many of whom might otherwise have a chance to experience Monterey Bay up close. Each year, students set sail aboard our 65-foot catamaran, explore the science of our local waters, and return home inspired to protect the oceans that define our community. With your support, we're not just teaching science, we're empowering the next generation of problem solvers who will protect Capitola's future. When young people understand the ocean, they care for it. And when they care for it, they act. Thank you for investing in our youth, our coastline, and a more sustainable future for Capitola.
Great. Thank you for being here this evening. Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay? I have to use this, I apologize. Thank you very much for your consideration of funding NAMI Santa Cruz County. My name is Linda Kaufman, and I have been a NAMI Santa Cruz Board Member for 15 years, and formally appointed by Supervisor Leopold to serve on the Santa Cruz County Mental Health Advisory Board for three years. I volunteer on our NAMI helpline, answering hundreds of calls for family members every year. I teach an eight-week family education course and a certified provider, NAMI family provider, education teacher. I have worked in community mental health for 24 years, specifically housing and residential and providing mental health services. I have worked at Santa Cruz County, at Seventh Avenue Center, a 99-person secured program here in town, and Front Street, a locally-owned mental health housing agency. And my daughter works for Encompass. We're all about mental health in my family. We are fortunate, we have been very fortunate to have these resources in our community. We are equally fortunate to have NAMI Santa Cruz with a robust and rich programs to support families and the peer community. If we hope to have family members support their loved ones at home, then we need to support, support and educate those family members. This keeps individuals off the streets and out of hospitals every day and feel safe and supported at home. There are numeral, innumerable benefits, I never should have a word I can't pronounce here, so I don't know why I'd use that one. There are many benefits of helping our community families that cannot always be quantified. So by helping families is helping those individuals that may not have that support and are unhoused at this time. With the help of this grant, Capitola families continue to have access to no-cost support programs, multi-week intensive courses, helplines, and presentations in schools, and the wider community. One Capitola resident recently shared, "NAMI is the most important tool in my mental health toolbox. I get more out of this than I do from therapy, psychiatry, or other groups. My peers encourage me to take better care of myself in ways that are actionable and meet me where I'm at. This is something that I do not get anywhere else in life. I am alive because of NAMI Santa Cruz and the amazing community I've gained from coming to this group." Thank you again for your ongoing support and consideration.
Great, thank you. What a great program. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll come back to council deliberation.
I just had one comment. This evening, before the city council meeting, I was contacted by Heidi Boynton, who is the Executive Director for Jacobs Heart, and she was unable to attend tonight. And she has said she really wanted to appreciate the community's support, especially Capitola, and the dynamic things that they're doing. I do know personally, I've worked with some families that aren't very much active in our community, and she was very appreciative of our support. And she just emailed me a letter, which I'll send out, but she just asked me if I'd pass out a copy to everybody. So she just wanted to pass on that. Thank you again.
Any other comments or a motion?
I will move to approve the grant funding for the 2025-2027 community grants program cycle as recommended by the city council, our ad hoc committee.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, we have continued item seven B to our next meeting. So we'll jump down to item seven C, which is the Capitol Municipal Code, Section 2.0, 140.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just for some context on this item, one of the fun things about being a city council member is that you're constrained by the Brown Act. And so some consideration here is that as council members, you can't talk about an item unless it's on the agenda. And just for members of the public who might not be aware, that's why when council members request items, they have to come back at a later meeting because we can't talk about it if it's not on the agenda, we can't take action. And so one example of this is on July 24th, Councilmember Orbach requested that staff conduct some research about how other cities handle council requests for an agenda item. In response to that request, I produced a memo to the council with data from 24 other agencies. And then on September 11th, Councilmember Orbach requested an agenda item to discuss this in a more formal setting where the council can participate in a discussion. So this is kind of an example of that Brown Act constraint in action. For context, Capitola's municipal code does have a section that kind of outlines this process. And so it states that council members can request an agenda item during an open meeting, and this typically happens during council member comments at the beginning of the agenda. So a little bit of information about what other cities do. So I sent out a request for information to the cities of California, and I received responses from 24 agencies. The full list of cities and the kind of outline of what each one does is included in the agenda packet, but a brief summary is listed here on the screen. Two cities have processes that allow individual council members to place an item on the agenda. This number does not include Capitola, so it's two other cities besides Capitola. Seven cities had processes that allowed two council members to request an item, and 14 cities have processes that allow the majority or more of council to request an item. So some example processes of what this could look like. Council members can request an item during a council meeting. A second council member will agree to place that item on a future agenda, and then the item will come back at a later date with a very brief report, and then the whole council can discuss and kind of provide direction to staff at that point. I've listed a couple of example cities where that's the process that was outlined. Another option is a bit more formal, but council members submit a written request for an agenda item. That written request is placed on the agenda for discussion and then direction to staff. If directed by the whole council, staff will return at a later meeting with a formal staff report based on council's direction. And there are some cities listed there that follow that process. Because Capitola's process is outlined in our municipal code, an ordinance would be required to amend the municipal code. And so at this time, it's, I'm available for any questions, but it's really up to the city council. If you guys wish to amend the municipal code, we would need an ordinance. And so at this point, I would just ask for direction. The city attorney and I would work on an ordinance and bring it back for review at a later point. I'm available for any questions.
Great. Questions? Are you over here?
My question is, if we say we want, we'll have a discussion about whether we want to move forward with adopting ordinance to change this process. But if we decide between two or three, and if it's three, can you explain how it doesn't violate Brown Act if we require three council members to approve of an agenda item? It's odd. It seems like it should, but it is not. Many cities use that procedure, not many. I frankly think the most common procedure I see is two council members, or less than a quorum. So if it's seven-member council, three people. But it does not violate the Brown Act. The tricky part is, the more people you require to engage with the decision about whether to put something on the agenda, the more they want to chat about it. And so the tricky part for me is always, if you say, I'd like to put X on the agenda, if you then need two votes to support you, two people might chime in and ask questions. And then we get to a point where we're having the discussion, and that we can't do. So it's fine. It's a little trickier, the more council members you have need to sign off on it.
I mean, ideally, we would bring up issues that are issues in general that maybe perhaps other council members would want a discussion about anyway. It wouldn't just be some random thing that no one's ever thought about. I think, I think that is really the purpose of me bringing this up, is I'd like to see more collaboration amongst the council members to actually talk about things that we all think are issues we care about and issues we'd like to tackle. Because as we've seen, I mean, we've had a really busy year, many, many things that are important, but also some things that are not very important. And I don't want our agendas to be bogged down by things that may not be high priority, if that makes sense. I don't know, I'm curious to hear what you guys think.
We want to hear from the public before we have our dialogue.
I just have a question. So the process right now, the agenda set by the city manager and the mayor, correct?
So staff sets the agenda. Our tradition is that we do that, I do that in collaboration with the mayor. It's actually not codified. So at this point, the manager sets the agenda. I do it in collaboration with the mayor. That's been the practice. And the municipal code specifies sort of who can put items on the agenda, and it includes council members if they requested an open session, staff, city manager, city attorney, and the city treasurer, I believe.
Is there a process to determine, say, we want an item on the agenda, when it comes on, when it comes back? Like, who makes up, who makes the decision on when items come back?
So that's a very good question. And the answer is, is that I work in collaboration with the mayor to do so. I will tell you frankly, that I've worked with probably 15 different mayors, maybe a couple, couple folks twice. And almost, almost every year, that's been easy. There have been a few times when I've had mayors who didn't necessarily represent the views of kind of the majority of the council. And sometimes that led to challenges. Because the mayor might say, that's not an important thing, let's put that off. And I may have known that the rest of the council did want to see that come back sooner. So the timing is really up to me and the mayor. At the end of the day, there's a little bit of negotiation involved. And it's also the importance of choosing a mayor that represents the council as a body.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to public comment. If there is any. Seeing none, we'll take it back for deliberation.
Well, I'm happy to start. I, you know, Capitola is a small town, 10,000 people. So our process, even for the whole council meeting, is a little more casual than it is in places like, you know, Menlo Park or San Jose, or those places that are bigger. And for me, someone can point something out, but I haven't really seen any difficulty with the current process we have. It seems like, you know, while the municipal code says that, you know, one person can put an item on the agenda, what happens is that we have to do it in public session with the other council members there. And it seems like it's more of a consensus kind of thing, which I, I like that idea because, you know, I think if, if we started to have real problems, then, you know, I would be willing to look at making changes. But for me, right now, I sort of don't. I wonder why we're going to fix something that isn't broken. I just haven't seen it be a problem. So.
I think I, I mean, I would like to see at least two members of this body want to discuss something, at least, right, to discuss something for it to be on the agenda, so that there is some more collaboration. So there's more opportunity to, to have conversations. I don't think it needs to be a majority. I agree that this is a small city, and it's worked for many years. But I think for the, you know, for transparency purposes, I think this is a good idea. The reason why I brought it up to begin with was because I noticed at that meeting, there was an item on the agenda that was not discussed. And that's why I was like, hmm, why was that there? So I, I think for transparency purposes and for the, the spirit of collaboration, to have two is not cumbersome.
But the mayor will still, I think, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor will still work with the city manager, and they will have an opportunity to put items on the agenda without having to have two votes to do that. So that will continue. It's only if other council members, you know, bring something.
So I may have misunderstood, but right now, our municipal code does not make a distinction between the mayor's ability to put something on the agenda and a council member's ability to put something on the agenda. So the rules are the same for all of you. So the mayor doesn't get to come and talk to staff, you know, outside of a regular council meeting and have an agenda item placed. What I do is I work with the mayor on the order of the agenda and the timing, but not on generating specific agenda items.
Yeah, no, that, that's clear.
Just, I think, just for full transparency, I think, are you talking about the issue of the night that the issue was about assignment to commissions? Yeah, and so I just want to clarify that. I reached out because I have a, I had a conflict that, and I had reached out to Susan, asked if she would take it on. And Julia said that we were allowed to do that. It had to be put on the agenda. And so I think it was city staff that put it on the agenda. So it wasn't a request from me. I thought you, you were able to just change out. So I just want to be very clear that I didn't go around a process and not discussing it here. I just notified the city clerk, and she said that it has to be put on the agenda. As a course of business. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
I think that's great clarity, but I do think it brings us to the point of now everybody is aware, now the public's aware, now that we're aware. I do think that having two people, and how would that look in a meeting if, say, I want to bring banning rollerblades or something to the next council meeting? And then would you get like a second, even though it's not an agendaized item, right?
Yes, it's usually just a straw poll. We don't usually, I don't usually see people do a formal vote. Because usually there are two people, as Councilmember Orbach pointed out, there's some agreement usually that people will be interested in discussing.
I can support the two, long as it's like an informal process, if somebody asks about it and just get a second, not a written out procedure that goes through
Right.
a hearing and gets an agreement. But I really don't see it even as an issue, but I'm quite sure any item that we brought up, I don't think there's been an issue yet brought up that I haven't looked over at my fellow council members and have been like, yeah, we'll talk about that. So if it takes two, I'll make a motion that we that we give direction to staff to work on addressing the municipal code too. Provide two.
I'll second that. Great. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilor Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilor, yes, Councilor Westman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye. Passes unanimously. That took four, but it's okay. All right. 7D. Check registers. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. While Julia's bringing this slide, this next item, the cash report and treasurer's report, is typically a consent item, but we're making some changes to the reports. And there's been, we always have like a delay in the summer when we go to our summer schedule. So it's been quite a while since we've been in front of the council with these items. So we thought it warranted a brief discussion rather than just consent tonight. With that, I'll give a little bit of a background. So California Government Code requires that we do a monthly treasurer's report. And additionally, that the check register must be filed with the city council as part of financial oversight. So we do that by providing a cash report with the check registers following our payables runs that includes available cash balances, basically in the general fund. Those are the available to spend for general fund operations. On a monthly basis, after we reconcile our bank statements, we do a treasurer's report that includes the same information and then adds in special revenue funds and debt service funds. So that's kind of the backgrounds of the reports that we do. And that treasurer's report just gets posted on the website. It doesn't actually come to council in the consent. Next slide, please. I mean, and before I go any deeper, I just kind of want to go through cash versus fund accounting. So fund accounting is basically our budget. So it's our planned revenues versus our planned expenditures over our fiscal year. Where cash position, we're talking about the actual timing of when revenues come in and when dispersments are made. Again, both presented for council review. One through the cash report on the consent agenda, and the others just put on the website. Next slide, please. Like with most cities, we also have, there's a seasonality to our cash flow. And we typically run our lowest balances from July through December. And that's due primarily to the timing of revenues and some of our larger expenditures. So sales tax and TOT, two of our top three, they're monthly, but they can be variable and volatile. And in the case of both, actually, they lag by about two months. So July, when we have some of our highest expenditures, we're getting May's TOT, not June, which is our best TOT month. So that revenue's still lagging a little bit in the summer. And then on the expenditure side, three of our biggest payments are the CalPERS UAL. If we prepay that, that full payment of almost $3 million is due in July. There's options, other options, that I'll get into a little bit later. And then our insurance premiums and 9/11 JPA costs, we do 50% of those in July and then another 25% during the first six months. So again, those big expenditures are going out during the first half of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. As far as our fund balances and reserves, if you recall when we do budgeting, we leave $500,000 as kind of our general fund operating balance, which is about 2% of our overall general fund budget. But to put that into a little bit of perspective, our largest revenue is sales tax, is approaching $10 million. If we miss that revenue estimate by 1%, it'll eat up 20% of that fund balance. So there's, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. So for that reason, we also have a contingency reserve of $2.5 million to help balance out some of those cash flow shortages. Challenges that we're facing right now are, we have a number of projects that are grant reimbursable, and there's a lag getting those reimbursements to come in from the time we make the expenditures. Generally, well, my next slide, I'll do that. And then also, we still have outstanding reimbursements for storm damage to the Wharf from the January 23 storms, as well as December of 23 storms. So the major projects that are impacting cash flows, Jade Street Community Center right now, again, a lot of grant funding going to that, federal grants. When we did the Wharf, we, so the way these work is, we make the expenditures, we pay the contractor, and then we submit for reimbursement. On the Wharf, we are getting reimbursements in about four to six weeks. On the Community Center, that slowed down to about six to eight weeks. I'm hoping that stays the same, but I'm not sure if the federal shutdown may slow that down a little bit. I don't think so. Again, funds are committed. I'm not worried about getting the funds. This is more of just a timing discussion. Treasure Cove Playground, which we will be starting, I believe, very soon. Also, large funding is coming from grants and will be reimbursed. So that will have impacts on our cash flow. On the CIP Fund, it's currently in a negative position. And that's due partially to project delivery. Over the years, we've built up balances in there as we've planned for projects. Over the last couple of years, we've delivered on a lot of those projects, which is good because we have inflationary issues if we don't deliver on the projects, if we just keep putting funding. But now that we're delivering, we don't have like extra cash sitting in the CIP Fund for these grant-funded projects. It's also negative again for $1 million. There's about $1 million, just under $1 million, between FEMA and CALOES on the Wharf. It's like $970 or something like that. And then, again, the lag that I was talking about, going to six to eight weeks now. Next slide, please. But it's not all bad news. So we do have revenues coming in. I mentioned that $1 million, just under $1 million, between FEMA and CALOES. When the Treasure Cove Park project kicks off, there's $985,000 of fundraising dollars that I believe is going to be, I think the friends are giving that to the full amount at the beginning of the project. So that'll help mitigate cash flow for that project. And then we still have $294,000 of storm damage repair reimbursement on the Stockton Bridge that should be coming very soon. So as far as the priorities, if you recall during budget, we intentionally did not put funding into our reserve funds to bring them up to our target levels because we were anticipating this. So from a staff recommendation, we're still planning or recommending that we restore our reserve funds. And then as our revenues start catching up, we will get our general fund back up by December and then start building it up as we plan for next year's budget cycle. Next slide, please. As far as the reporting improvements, so again, I mentioned that we're going to put all of the same information into both the cash report and the treasurer's report so that you'll have consistent, comprehensive data. It'll be slightly different in timing because the cash report will go with AP check runs. And the treasurer's report is kind of your monthly audit true-up, if you will. But that should enhance the oversight, transparency, and as well as our fiscal management. Thank you. For future years, cash flow strategies, because this is the second year where in the summer, we've gotten really thin on cash because we've been doing a lot of projects. And so next year, as we go through the budgeting process, I'm going to be engaging with the FAC and looking at different options as far as cash management to get through the summer. Some of those could include, rather than paying CalPERS in a lump sum in July, we could spread that out over the course of the fiscal year. It increases our cost by 3.4%, but we can offset that by interest earnings if we can earn greater than 3.4%, which right now we are. So if that's still the case next July, then this may be a different strategy. If the interest earnings aren't there, we could always utilize our retirement trust to capture those savings and then replenish the retirement trust throughout the fiscal year rather than making those payments on a monthly basis to PERS. We could consider increasing our contingency reserve over time, but that takes additional resources. So that would be something that we'd have to kind of plan over probably several budget cycles. And then finally, there's also tax revenue anticipation notes, which a lot of agencies, usually larger agencies, it's basically a short-term debt note that they issue in July to cover cash flow through the first six months of the year. I don't think we're there yet, but that is an option and a tool that many fiscal or public agencies use. Next slide. And so our recommendation tonight is to receive the monthly treasurer's report and cash position update. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council questions?
A question. When we talked about the budget before about regarding Measure Y, will there be a report when, or once that come back to the council on updates somewhere that it looks like?
Measure Y, we could do a mid-year. The problem with mid-years, we're just barely getting into like sales tax revenue. It's probably the Measure Y should be part of the budget hearings, I would believe. In my thought, like when we're getting ready for goal-setting and planning is here's kind of the report on Measure Y and then kind of kick off the budget cycle is how I was thinking of that.
Okay.
I guess this is just maybe a granular question, but just in, well, I could ask you at the FAC meeting, but the increases for the CalPERS UAL, what's like the dollar amount, do you know, of that 3.4% if we weren't paying up for it?
That's probably about $100,000 now.
Okay, okay.
It'd be a little less than that.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you. Any public comments? I don't see any. We can come back for deliberation. We do not need a motion as this was our monthly report to have been received.
I'm going to go ahead and check with our city manager because there isn't action listed on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to say thank you for doing this. I thought it was very informative, and it's hard for people to understand how the cash flow in cities often work.